All right, it is six o'clock on Monday, the seventeenth of January, two thousand and twenty. We'll call our meeting in order and start off with the roll call, please.
Do you want to do the pledge of allegiance?
Oh, pledge of allegiance, yes, I'm sorry.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unundergod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we'll start off with the roll call.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Callister?
Coolman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Okay, next is our consent agenda, which consists of our regular agenda, the minutes of the January third, two thousand and twenty-two meeting, and our bills.
So move.
Second.
A motion by Corey Simonson, second by Coleman.
Lyon.
Lyon, you been it?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I had a tough night tonight.
Got it.
Go ahead, take the roll.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Next is the mayor's state of the city address. Just want to say good evening to everyone. As mayor of McCoqueta before, one of the things I started doing then was the state of the city address. So here goes again. We've seen a lot of things happen in our town the last few years, and we've made plans to continue moving forward. This year was one of the biggest, this year, one of the biggest projects is going to be paving and the underground utility work on East Platte Street. There will be numerous meetings on this with local residents and businesses, but you know it's going to be a difficult time getting around as the construction moves forward. But it will be great when it's done, and I plan to keep a watch on all the change orders and extra costs, as this is a DOT project, but we have to pay for it. So I don't want us being stuck for any costly overruns or make goods. The downtown facade project for the east side of Main Street will begin this year, and this project is being paid for by grants and building owners. Hopefully, it should not create much of a traffic issue on Main Street as that progresses. The city Public Safety Committee is recommending the city keep signs at Main and Summit as well as Vermont and Summit. The stop sign at Western slated to possibly be removed, and I think this makes sense to help traffic flow a lot better. We have some new faces here in city government. We have our new city manager, Josh Bolt, new police chief Brendan Zymet, new city councilman Dick Rickroll, and my old face Mayor Tom. I encourage you to contact us, folks, or any other city employees if you have any questions or concerns. The city needs to work on controlling its debt. New projects are nice, but we have to make sure we have the money to pay for it before incurring more debt. And we also need to work on bringing the current debt we have down. We have a committee which will be looking into property maintenance. There are quite a few areas in town that are in need of cleanup. We have a city ordinance which requires property owners to keep their place free of junk vehicles and trash, and we will be enforcing this ordinance as we've added a new city inspector, former police chief Brad Coranda, along with Scott Worth. It's not just a matter of shoveling snow and keeping the grass cut. Residents need to take pride in their property and get it cleaned up. If you have any questions about city manners, matters, please feel free to call your councilman, the city manager, or myself, and we'll try to keep you informed as best we can. And with COVID nineteen not going away, I would like to see us open City Hall back up to the public, at least as far as letting people come to be in person at committee meetings and city council meetings. As long as you wear a mask, I really don't see a reason why you can't come in. And together, we can make McCoqueta continue to prosper and move ahead in the future. With that said, we'll move on to the audience portion. If we have anybody in the audience who would like to speak up, just flag Judy. We'd like you to keep your comments to a maximum of three minutes.
Mayor, I think we have Richard as his name or handle on Zoom. Richard, there's no chat here, but can you nod your head yes if you're intending to speak to this? All right, I'm gonna unmute you.
He's muted, there we go.
Good evening, members of the city council, and also to you, Mayor Mesherly. Before I start, I want to before I start, I would like to thank the Public Works Director and all they do for trying to keep the snow clear off the city streets. And that's appreciated. However, there has been, seems to be a lack of communication, my age group and younger, because we don't listen to KMAQ, we only go by Facebook, and we have cell phones with regards to the snow emergency and things on that nature, and I look forward to talking at depth about this one application. It's called Alert Iowa. I've seen it on TV stations like KWC, and I think it would be a wonderful asset to the city of McCoqueta to use that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council? If not, we'll move on. Our next item is a presentation by RSM US LLP, representing our audit.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, awesome. Thank you very much. My name is Brett Nessler. I was the manager on the audit for the June thirty, two thousand and twenty-one year end. Also on the call, we have Heidi Habkirk, who has been involved with the audit many times as a partner in the past. So I can share my screen. I have a short presentation that I can walk through. It says disable the share screen, so if there's a way to enable that, I can. Otherwise, I can just talk through what I was planning on presenting.
Brett, I frankly, do you have any, these are preset with these meetings. I don't have any
Can you right click on his name and on the right, on the right there? Oh, yeah, more. Make co-host. If that helps.
That seems to have worked.
We can credit Mark Lyon for that one.
All right, thank you.
Looks good, Brett.
Technology's great when it works, but when it doesn't, it can, can cause us all some, some trouble, huh? So just kind of as another brief introduction, as RSM, we're the auditors here. And so the city has engaged us to come in and perform an audit. As part of that, we, we issue or will be issuing a report to council summarizing the audit process as well as an audited financial statement. So the communications that we have to have with the city officials start with the auditor responsibilities. So in essence, what we have been engaged to do is to provide an opinion over the city's financial statements. The actual financial statements, as well as the design and implementation of controls, are the responsibility of management of the city. Other than we come in and perform our testing and provide an opinion. We have provided an unmodified or clean opinion on the city's financial statements for all funds. That unmodified is the most favorable opinion we can get, so that is definitely the goal of the city. That just means that there's nothing there that we found adverse enough to give, you know, any different opinion. In terms of accounting practices, this is just kind of a recap of usually anything that might be new, but in the case of two thousand and twenty-one, there were no new accounting standards that impacted the city that was adopted. There are no new accounting policies. We did not identify any significant unusual challenges, and we, we felt that the city had adopted preferable accounting methods other than clarifying that the city is on a cash basis, which is different from the normal accounting basis. It just means they, they use a different basis, but we have opined upon that basis. Audit adjustments, there, there were a few audit adjustments primarily around transfers in and out and getting those to net. Those have been reflected in the financial statements for the audit report. In terms of uncorrected misstatements, we did not identify any. Those would be otherwise misstatements that the city chose not to post and were comfortable with having an error. They, they did not have any in two thousand and twenty-one, which is great. We had no disagreements with management, which is always great. In terms of consultations with other accountants, the only one that we're aware of is the other auditors that are used for the McCoqueta Municipal Electric Utility. They receive a different audit opinion, audit opinion from different auditors, but they end up rolling into the city's report anyway. And in terms of any significant issues or difficulties, we ran into none. It was great working with Andrea and Judy. Both were excellent and incredibly helpful in getting us to complete the audit and getting us here for the audit report. So here we have a chart on receipts for governmental funds. So here we find these helpful. They just kind of do a year-over-year comparison. If you can see it in color, then blue is two thousand and twenty-one. Otherwise, the chart on the left is two thousand and twenty-one. So looking through here, most of them are fairly consistent year-over-year. The, the one large spike that stands out to me is that intergovernmental column. There's about a one million dollar increase in intergovernmental revenue that is primarily due to receiving increased funding, federal funding for projects, mainly those construction projects that were mentioned earlier. I'm sure everybody in the city has seen of Platt Street, the Dearborn Sewer, the downtown revitalization, and the Upper Story Rental Rehab, where the city has received a fairly significant amount of federal funding to help with the cost of those projects. This next tab is the same type of chart, but rather than revenue coming in, these are dispersments going out for the city. Again, they're fairly consistent. You'll see a slight spike with the debt service, which was mentioned earlier, as those principal and interest payments start coming due, that debt service will continue to climb as the two thousand and twenty-one bonds are paid, as well as the other previous ones. Then also a small spike in the capital projects fund, and that would just be the reverse of what we saw from the revenue side as the city gets more funding from the federal government for these projects. They're of course spending that money on these projects, which is great, and that's what they're, they're designed to be there for. Here, this is a summary of both receipts and dispersments for all of the enterprise funds. These enterprise funds are the business-type funds of the city. They include the Water Utility Fund, the Wastewater Treatment Fund, the Storm Water Fund, and the new Garbage Recycling Fund. That garbage recycling fund is new to the city for year two thousand and twenty-one. And here you'll see a slight increase in operating receipts with a similar increase in operating dispersments, and that's primarily just due to that garbage recycling fund bringing in revenue and then having expenses to spend, function. And finally, we have, due to that increase in federal funding this year, the city had to receive a single audit, which is basically just a more focused and narrowed audit on a single program that's required anytime the city has expended more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funding. So that triggered it this year that you won't have seen it in years past. We did test that CDBG Community Development Block Grant that each of those programs listed before were under the Platt Street, Dearborn Sewer, et cetera. That program gets its own separate opinion and received an unmodified or again, clean opinion, which again is the, the best opinion that we can provide on those. There was one control deficiency that we noted during that program in that the city is outsourcing to a third party to help with the compliance requirements related to that, and they've gone, you know, outside for more expertise, which is great and certainly a great idea. But the, the control deficiency was related to that third party wasn't providing the supporting backup to the city, so the city could also determine that compliance was being followed. They were able to get that and are getting it on a go-forward basis, so we determined there are no compliance findings. There's no issues there. It's just an idea to, you know, keep monitoring that and make sure that what that third party is doing is consistent with the grant proceeds. Then finally, we have another letter that will be issued for government auditing standards, and it says that due to government auditing standards, we have to communicate any material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or any compliance findings. And we didn't have any compliance findings, but we did have a few material weaknesses and a significant deficiency. Most of these are repeating from prior years and are just a result of a limited staff at the city. And they, the material weaknesses include segregation of duties over the utility billing and also over the payroll transactions, and this is just due to individuals having access. Again, it's just kind of limited to the size of the city. Then also we had several, we had entries to interfund transfers to make those balance out. So just an efficiency to keep watching those balances and reconciling them throughout the, throughout the year. Then another significant deficiency related to, again, segregation of duties, this time on the cash disbursement side. So each of these segregation of duties, we just want to communicate to council because as, as a limited accounting staff and a limited staff the city has, they rely on you, and we as auditors rely on your compensating controls and all the reviews that you perform, whether it's checking the budget, whether it's reviewing the invoices prior to disbursement during your council meetings, all of that are what we consider compensating controls, and, and that's why we want to, you know, stress that here, is that your role here really helps limit the potential to the city for any kind of misappropriation of assets. So that is all I have prepared. Again, if you would like, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If I don't have an answer today, I can always look in the file and get back to you. My memory's not what it used to be, so I might not remember the answer for every question you have.
Okay, anybody have any questions? If not, thank you for your presentation.
All right, thank you so much. Just to give you an idea, I know the timeline, Andrea and I will be working together to finalize and issue this here in the coming days, hopefully.
Okay.
Thank you, Brett. You don't have to stick around for us.
All right, thank you. I appreciate your time.
All right, is there anyone else who'd like to address the city council before we move on? If not, we'll move into old business. An item A is a discussion and possible motion to approve a payment in the amount of nine thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-two cents to WHKS for the South Main Bridge Project. Do we have any background on this? Gosh?
Thank you, Mayor. This project is going to be starting soon, and this is really just the beginning. WHKS represents our design firm for it. After this payment, we're about ninety-eight point five percent complete for their design payments, so with your approval, we'll send another retainer payment to them and be closing this out soon.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So move, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Coleman, seconded by Lyon. We don't have any discussion, then take the roll, please.
Lyon?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
All right, our next item is a discussion and possible motion to approve payment in the amount of twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents to WHKS. Once again, for the South Main Trail Project.
So I'm
Okay, moved by Coleman.
Second.
Seconded by Simonson. Any discussion here? Take the roll.
Coleman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Item C is a discussion and possible motion to approve payment in the amount of sixty-two thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and fifty cents to Origin for the Platt Street Project. Frank, you want to chime in on this one?
This is another monthly, like, pay estimate for the, for the construction engineering for the Platt Street Project.
This for east side or west side or all of it?
This is for the construction engineering for like the inspection, basically, for the west side. Sorry.
All right. We have no more questions. Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Coleman, second, seconded by Lyon. We have no discussion. Take the roll, please.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Item D is a discussion and possible motion to approve payment in the amount of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty-two cents to Chick-fry Excavating. This is for the Platt Street Project.
This for the east side or the west side?
This is for the west side for the actual kind of like construction.
Okay.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion by Lyon?
Second.
Seconded by Coleman. We have any discussion?
Frank, where are we at percent-wise? How close to being done on pay?
We're, we're, we're probably about fifty percent.
But just West Platte or the entire project?
With the entire project.
Okay, we have no more discussion, then take the roll, please.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Item E is a discussion and possible motion approving a change order, number six, in the amount of one thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and twenty-eight cents submitted by Tricon Construction for the Passade West Project. Looks like it's a credit for one thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. You don't get that very often.
Five years.
With you, Mark? Okay, motion by Rick Earl, seconded by Holm. Take the roll.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Right, we move into new business. An item A is a resolution accepting fiscal year twenty, two thousand and twenty-one audit as presented by RSM US LLP.
So moved.
Motion by Lyon, seconded by
Very good.
But seconded by Good? Yes.
Mayor, may I speak to that for a second? I, I know Brett's not on anymore, but it's, it's good that we have that and done. Some of those findings, you know, where I come from, we had staff of two hundred and twenty, very similar findings. There's, there's not, it's not ever a perfectly controlled risk environment, but it's their job to state those things that, so there's no extreme cases like in Dixon. So that doesn't come as a total surprise to me, but coming from a system that has a bit bigger of an environment, I know what kind of controls he's at least talking about, having a second approval for a bills list, those payroll functions, the cash deposits and checking those things nightly and those things. So kind of measuring up where we are for staff doesn't necessarily justify bringing on a number of people to make this perfect in an auditor's eyes, and I just want to state that will never be perfect because there will always be something, but that what he presented is typical of what an auditor would present, and we're just happy to have that audit and ready to move forward.
Sure, great, thank you. Item B is a resolution to establish a public hearing.
To vote on that.
Oh, yeah, okay. Go ahead and take the roll.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
All right, now, item B is a resolution to establish a public hearing on Monday, February seventh, two thousand and twenty-two at six PM for the two thousand and twenty-two Community Development Block Grant. CB Public Facilities, this would be a, it's a CBD, CDBG, CV application. This, I'm assuming is for the facade project downtown?
This is for the YMCA.
Oh, the YMCA?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Scott's not with us in the audience tonight. I can't speak to the specific project, the YMCA. Frank, are you aware? What specifically?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think this is for the replacement of the makeup air unit and other repairs that are in the like swimming pool area.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Establish a public hearing?
So moved.
Yeah, to establish the public hearing next Monday. Yeah, okay.
So moved.
We got a motion by Holm?
Second.
Seconded by Lyon. Do we have any more discussion? And take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Item C is a resolution setting Monday, February seventh, two thousand and twenty-two at six PM as a public hearing for the purpose of soliciting written and oral comments on the city's proposed financial year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three maximum property tax certainly, from certain levels.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Holm?
Second.
Excuse me, motion, motion by
Lyon.
Lyon.
Seconded.
Seconded by Holm.
Seconded by Good.
Good, all right. You guys sound alike.
We, we ran into that before.
All right, you want to address this one real quick?
What we're doing here is setting a public hearing for the next council meeting to discuss what our, what our levy can be, and that's mandated by the state, so Illinois did not have that pleasure, so you know, there's kind of a general rule of thumb over there not to increase your levy by five percent, and there were some bad actors that did. Iowa steps in and says you can't do that. Here's your limit, and that's what we're going to discuss the next meeting.
Okay. So if we have no more discussion, take the roll.
Coolman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Next, we move on to committee reports.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I got a question. I wasn't at the last meeting, so I was kind of curious on who the Public Works Committee Chairman would be and the Airport Commission Chairman would be.
I'm the Public Works Chairman.
Your Public Works?
Okay.
Then airport?
That's Sue Sandberg.
Okay.
Sue Sandberg is that?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next is, like I said, committee reports. We start off with Finance Committee. I believe it's is Josh, okay, well, I guess I'll read for him.
But I can take it for him.
Good.
So on the Finance Personnel Committee, number one is a resolution approving American Rescue Plan dollars to be spent on the emergency nine-one-one equipment. So we, we got all that money. And we talked about spending most of it on the new like storm sewer project, but we're going to carve some off here, recommend to council to use it for the, for enhancing the nine-one-one council over at the dispatch.
Okay.
Is this, is this where they're going to be organizing the distribution or the information network so that everybody in the county gets it when they need it, and my understanding is it fits better with the state program?
I really can't tell you, damn it.
The radio system.
The radio.
Radio wise, it
That's number two.
Yeah, some confusion, right?
Okay, not number two is kind of what you're talking about.
That is what I'm talking about, thanks.
Hey, we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Good, seconded by Coleman. We have no more discussion? Go ahead and take the roll.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Number two, discussion and possible motion to authorize payment in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars to Jackson County nine-one-one Service Board for the Emergency Services Radio Communication System.
So moved, second.
Moved by Corey, seconded by Good. Any discussion here? And go ahead and take the roll.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Okay, item B is Public Works Committee.
Okay. Discussion and possible motion authorizing replacement of incandescent traffic heads in the amount of seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars for the Platt Street Project. Basically, this is some of the stoplights along Platt Street. You know, we got a lot of new ones, but some of the old ones were, were kept, but they're still using old light bulbs that now you have to keep all these spare light bulbs around and dealing with all that, so we want to make them all LEDs so they all have the same bulb, and then it's going to be more energy efficient and probably brighter, too.
Okay, yeah.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Holm?
Yeah. Second.
Seconded by Rick Earl? Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Council, you will like be, you will like be seeing this later on as an official change order on the project.
Okay. All right, if we have no more, then go ahead and take the roll.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Coolman?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Do we have somebody here from the Airport Committee?
Yes, I'm, I'm liaison on the Airport Commission. Number one, discussion and possible motion to approve agreement with McClure Engineering for Design and Bidding Services for the reconstruct runway fifteen end project for the McCoqueta Airport in the amount of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars. This is a ninety-ten federal grant. We pay ten percent, which is twenty-two thousand, seven hundred. We'll be working, the commission will be working with the city to figure out how to pay that, because it's not it's basically, it's about five hundred foot long overrun at the north end of the runway that's in pretty bad shape with crumbling blacktop weeds, and it's just an unsafe thing to land a plane on, so it's time to reconstruct it, and we have to maintain it anyway, plus it'll add five hundred feet back onto the runway that is usable for, so maybe some larger planes could land. Now, the engineering work was supposed to be done this year, or last year, I mean, and the construction work is supposed to be done twenty-two and was supposed to be done this year or last year, I mean, and the construction work is supposed to be done twenty two and twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three and completed in twenty three. McClure is doing the engineering work. And apparently the construction was deferred for one year due to some budgetary problems. Are there, anybody have any questions?
Anybody has any technical questions, like engineer is is on Zoom?
Oh, good. No. Did I leave anything out? Frank, you would know. No.
Yeah, thank you, Frank. Jay, do you have a care to comment? I saw your hand was up.
No, I actually, that that was very good explanation. The only thing I would add is that there's a design only grant that will pay for this portion of the project, which is due in April. So we'll bring that to them probably the next meeting ahead of April one, and then we'll design it through this next year. It will probably bid it sometime either next fall or with the winter of twenty three with construction slated for likely summer of twenty twenty three. So a construction grant will then go in after bids come in next, you know, next year for, you know, an April submittal of a construction grant application to the F A.
Okay, Jay, may I? What what type of plane does this help the runway land if approved by council?
Yeah, currently you guys, you know, you're able to handle some of the smaller. So A one and B one aircraft, so you're talking the the single engine and smaller twin engine aircraft. With with the addition of the three, you know, the five hundred feet, you're you're up to thirty eight hundred feet, which will get you the some of the larger twin engine aircraft. And even some of the smaller business jets. So you're talking maybe a Cessna Citation one or a King Air. So you you're opening it up to more business community that that use those business jets. So it it helps your your airport out a lot from that regard.
Okay, Jay and I also spoke earlier in the afternoon about the bill that President Biden signed in November fifteen. We do have a predetermined allocation of a hundred ten thousand dollars for airport use. How that gets funneled through Jay and I are both kind of digesting what's coming down, and that's probably not entirely set yet, even by Congress and grant administrators. Just kind of using history as a guide here. There's strong potential for at least using that amount to help out with their local requirements. No promise, but a likelihood.
Very good.
We'll take it if we can get it. So the city would be on on the end of it for about twenty two, twenty three thousand, basically?
That's correct.
Yeah. Was this money budgeted? Because I know it was from a previous project and it got carried over. So did we budget that money beforehand?
We need to. Yeah, I say I'm not prepared to answer that question. I'd love to, but I'm not prepared yet.
Yeah. Okay.
This is only a first week.
Yep, yep, yep.
You're doing pretty good.
Oh, yeah, definitely, definitely.
Oh, smiling.
Just briefly, somebody tell me briefly, what is the use for the airport? What kind of use? Is it business? Is it private mix? I really not seen activity anytime I've been over that way. So I don't know.
It's basically a mix of private and business.
Yeah.
It's a small airport. It's not used like the Quad City Airport or Dubuque Airport.
Oh, yeah.
It's just maybe once every other day, plane comes and goes.
It all depends on the private pilots, you know?
I've always had issues sending a lot of money out there, but this is probably the best news we've heard of of extending the runway to get other planes in here. So.
For what it's going to cost, I think it's a good investment. Okay, well.
We need a motion.
We need a motion. Somebody want to move? Okay, move by Good.
Second.
Seconded by Holm. We have.
Lyon.
What?
Seconded by Lyon.
Oh, Lyon. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Seconded by Lyon. Go ahead and take the roll.
Rick Earl.
No.
Lyon.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Okay, next we made it to the city manager's report.
We missed number two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Number two, discussion and possible motion to approve geotechnical service agreement with construction materials testing C M T in the amount of seventy eight hundred and ten dollars for the reconstruct runway fifteen end project at the airport. I I'm not sure what this is about unless it's for testing of the ground or the materials that they're going to be using out there. Frank, do you have any information?
This is during the kind of like construction. No, I'm sorry, this is the this is the ground bores, soil samples that will be taken before the construction starts. So we know how to design the actual runway, how much rock and how much and how much pavement.
Okay. So it's necessary to the project.
So moved.
We've got a motion by Holm.
Lyon.
Lyon. I get you guys confused all the time. Motion by Lyon. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Good. We have no more discussion? Take the roll.
Lyon.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
No.
Okay, says interim city manager report, but I think he is the real city manager. So Josh?
Thank you, Mayor. Day one here. Incredibly fun, fast paced, lots to learn, still is, will be for the next year and two. So as long as you'll have me. So I look forward to a good relationship. I did ask Judy not to change anything on the agenda because I didn't want to turn her world upside down. So as her and I get to know each other better, as we I get to know the staff better, I intend to make this agenda a bit more descriptive as opposed to relying on the council packet to understand what's going on. And that's not only for you, but it's for the public as well, as well as other people around the community. So that, you know, outside business partners can see what we're doing, what progress we're making as well. Question came up today about the chicken ordinance, and that is going to be on the next agenda as a first reading for ordinance. And we can deliberate some further on that. But just so you know, and the public knows that that's the expectation that it would be on the February seventh agenda. Heading out of town last Friday night. You know, we had this snow and the threat of a decent snowstorm, and albeit a small amount of snow, it turned to ice fairly quickly around four P M. I owe true kudos to Frank and the crew for making the streets here in town at least better than they were abroad. So I I want to thank Frank and his crew for putting down some good work and using salt for its attentive purposes and getting the roads safe for the commuters and the city throughout that time. That's all I got. Judy, have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay, then. Now we move to the mayor and council reports. Item A is a discussion and possible motion appointing Josh Bolt and myself as representatives to the Jackson County Economic Alliance Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Simonson, seconded by Lyon. We have no discussion? Take the roll.
Coleman.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Item B is a discussion and possible motion appointing Josh Bolt and myself to the ECIA Board.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Simonson, seconded by Holm. We have no discussion? Take the roll.
Good.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Item C is a discussion and possible motion appointing Josh Bolt to the Macokee River Watershed Management Authority.
So moved.
Move by Coleman.
Second.
Seconded by Rick Earl. We have no discussion? Take the roll.
Holm.
Yes.
Simonson.
Yes. Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
And item D is a discussion and possible motion appointing Benjamin Davison to the Building Code of Appeals Board.
So moved.
Move by Lyon.